All right, folks, thank you. Thanks for being patient and waiting. Before we start, if we could just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Just before we officially open, just an announcement we wanted to make first has been passed to me from David Tuttle, Commander, American Legion, Post 248. We'd like to let everyone know that there is a Memorial Day Ceremony, 23rd of May, at 6:30 PM Central Fire Station, Main Street. And again, before we officially open the meeting, we can do our intros before we go, right? So if we could, just we'll start down this end, let people know who you are.
Rebecca Oldham, Town Administrator.
Jason Aves, Select Board Member.
Mark Parento, Select Board Member.
Daniel McDonald, Selectman.
Ed Watson, Board of Selectmen.
Kathy Kestrelis, Board of Selectmen.
Elizabeth Cuniff, Town Clerk.
Adam Costa, Town Council.
Mark Huber, Finance Board.
Jim Scanlon, Finance Board.
Bill O'Neil, Finance Committee.
Ruth Rivard, Finance Board.
My name is Melissa Baker, I'm the current Chair of the Finance Board, and I just wanted to say a quick thing if it was all right with everybody. As a volunteer board, we understand that time is a valuable commodity, so we appreciate everyone that has taken the time to be here tonight. As with many of our neighboring communities, the budget process for fiscal year 25 has been challenging, but we want to acknowledge the efforts of our town departments, including the Pentucket Regional School District, that worked together and compromised, which has allowed for a balanced budget to be presented to you this evening. It's through the dedication of our town employees and the volunteers that serve on our boards and committees that we continue to make great strides here in Groveland. I encourage anyone who has an interest in volunteering within the town to look at the opportunities available on our website or to reach out to the Town Administrator for additional information. Thank you.
Yeah, you will. Thank you. My name is William Dark, I'm your Town Moderator. I'm going to turn it over to Beth Cuniff to open our meeting.
Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the annual town meeting to meet at the Dr. Elmer S. Bagnell School, 253 School Street, Groveland, Mass. on Monday, April 29, 2024, at 6:30 PM, to act upon or to take any other action relative thereto on the following articles.
Okay, thank you. And before we actually get going into the articles, some of you may know I've been around here for quite a while. Actually, 30 years ago, I first got elected to the Board of Selectmen. Hard to believe, young 30-year-old, now an old 60-year-old. In 30 years, things have changed. Every year that I've been here, I always ask that people be civil to each other, especially with the state of our country. We can disagree, it's how we disagree. Okay, we can disagree nicely. So I don't, again, as most of you know, I don't have a lot of rules. If you have something new to say, glad to hear it. If you're going to say the same thing that's been said, just don't bother, okay? Just do your talking with your vote. Again, if you want to speak, there's a mic here, there's one back there, and when you stand up, just say who you are and your address. It's important, right, Beth? We need to know who's making, speaking and making motions. Again, being civil is so important, and being 60 years old now means a couple of things. Number one, it's almost past my bedtime.[288.12][288.12](Laughter). And number two, I'm a little grumpier than I used to be. So I don't want to get grumpy and angry at people, let's just try to be nice to each other, okay? Having said that, there's one article, there's one thing that we want to do before we actually get going. We're going to, I'm going to look for a motion for some people, some of our visitors here who are not townspeople that would be speaking on some of the articles. We're going to make a motion beforehand to allow them to speak, so we don't have to do that each time, so.
I move the following people be allowed to address the audience during the town meeting: Rebecca Oldham, Town Administrator; Adam Costa, Town Council; Sam Joslin, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer; and Annie Schindler, Town Planner/Conservation Agent.
All right, so we have motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Majority in favor. And just again, if things, if people have been coming to town meeting for some time, last year, the warrant changed slightly in that the motions are written, although it's not in everybody else's, right? They don't have that motion. Do they, the articles that, the printed stuff they have doesn't actually have the printed motion in your packets? So typically, I've read the whole article. There are some of these articles that have, the motion is basically the same thing as the article, so I'll read the motion under the article, I'll say what the motion is, it'll get moved and seconded and will be voted. Some of the articles, it has, you know, a little more wording, but there's a one-line motion, so I'm not just going to read a one-line motion, I'll read the article and somebody will make that motion. So we'll just explain it as we go along, just again, a little different than sometimes it's been. So, under Article 1, "To direct the qualified to vote an annual town election to meet in their respective voting precinct, Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. on Monday, May 6, 2024, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, to elect the following town officers and vote on the following offices and ballot question." And as you can see, there's a whole bunch of people running, so it's something like a motion to accept the article as printed in the warrant.
I'll make a motion to accept Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, if you can, yeah, just in.
Lee Thomas, Volunteer. I thought there were three Selectmen. There's only two on the list.
Two seats are up.
Okay, sorry.
A bunch of people running. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Article 2, "To see if the town will vote to stagger the terms of members of the planning board such that (a) the membership seat currently occupied by Christopher M. Goodwin, which is set to expire in 2028, shall appear on the ballot of the annual town election in 2028 for a term expiring in 2029, at which point the seat shall again appear on the ballot at the annual town election in 2029 for a term of five years expiring in 2034 and every five years thereafter; and (b) the membership seat currently occupied by Dennis J. McNulty, which is set to expire in 2028, shall appear on the ballot of the annual town election in 2028 for a term expiring in 2030, at which point the seat shall again appear on the ballot at the annual town election in 2030 for a term of five years expiring in 2035 and every five years thereafter, take any other action relative thereto." The article was submitted by the current, by the Town Planner. It says, "Note: Currently, the terms of the planning board members are incorrectly staggered, and during certain election years, three members are up for reelection, and some years, none are up for reelection. This article will reorder the terms of the planning board members so that one member is up for reelection each year, which was the intent for the term, for the terms for the board members. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action."
I'll make a motion that the town approve Article 2 as set forth in the warrant.
I'll second.
Motion, second, and discussion. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article 3, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 54B, to allow trust funds to be invested in accordance with General Law, Chapter 203C, the so-called prudent investment rule, or take any other action relative thereto." The article was submitted by the Treasurer Collector. Note: Allows for a broader range of investments, some of which may be riskier than what would otherwise be allowed for investments in savings banks. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
I make a motion that the town accept General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of Article 3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Senator Tarr, glad you could be with us here this evening, thank you. Article 4, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, for town treasurers to manage abandoned funds in accordance therewith or take any other action relative thereto." Article submitted by the Treasurer Collector. Note: Provides for an alternative procedure for dispersing of abandoned funds known as tailings held in the custody of the town. Adopting this statute allows for a more efficient and expedited process of abandoned funds. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
I make a motion that the town accept General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A.
I'll second.
Motion and second, under Article 4, any discussion? Take a vote. All in favor of Article 4, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Article 5, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108P, authorizing the town to pay additional compensation to the town Treasurer Collector, an amount equal to 10% of the regular compensation, but in no event greater than $1,000 annually, upon completion of necessary courses of study and training and attainment of a certificate by the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association as a certified Massachusetts municipal collector or a certified Massachusetts municipal treasurer, or take any other action relative thereto." Article was submitted by the Town Administrator. Note: Adoption of this general law as proposed by this article would establish this stipend as a part of town policy and would formally recognize the benefits of this certification to the town and encourage the further education of future staff if they have not already attained certification. The Mass. General Law provides for a maximum stipend of $1,000 per year. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. Don't see, we have a motion.
I make a motion that the town accept General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108P.
I second.
Motion and second, Article 5, any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous, passes. Article 6, "To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 105, Administration of Government of the Town of Groveland, general bylaws as follows, deleting the strike through language and add the language in bold." So, Section 105-1, Evening Office Hours, whoever shall accept the offices of Town Clerk, Tax Collector, and Town Treasurer shall, as a public service to the townspeople, open their offices for town business one evening each week. Set evening to be Monday from 4:00 PM, and it's striking out 7:00 and making it 6:00, except for holidays or unforeseen difficulties, at which time one other evening may be designated, or take any other action relative thereto." The article submitted by the Treasurer Collector and Town Clerk. Note: Residents are not visiting Town Hall after 6:00 PM, and time would be better spent adding hours to the regular work week to provide better services for the residents. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action.
I move that the town amend Section 105-1 of the town's general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
I second.
Motion and second, under Article 6, any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 6, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Did somebody say no? I'm sorry. No. Yes or no? So, majority pass. To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way, Billis Way, do, I'll read this anyway.
I'd like to make a motion that the town table this article, and I would like to defer to the Town Council to explain this a little bit further.
All right, before we have a second on that, right, if you have motion to table, we can't discuss that, right?
Oh, so sorry.
No, it's, the motion's okay, we just can't, you can speak before we get a second, or?
I can, yes. It's okay with you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. So again, for the record, Adam Costa, Town Council. So, it became known to the town in preparation for action on this article, you can see from the text in your warrant that this article anticipated doing two things. The first was to accept roadway known as Billis Way as a public way. That's a statutory process requiring a majority vote of town meeting. But then secondarily, and often what comes in conjunction with the acceptance of the road as public, is for the town to acquire an interest in the road. If the town is going to maintain that road, if the town is going to be responsible for the care and upkeep of that road, it needs to have an ownership interest in the road. That's the way that it works with public ways. The problem here, and this is not terribly uncommon in Massachusetts, is that when a private developer acquires a property, develops a subdivision, and then sells off the lots in the subdivision, sometimes the developer retains the ownership interest in the roadway as the lots are sold, and other times, the developer won't. The developer will simply convey the individual lots without reserving to itself the ownership interest in the roadway. The challenge that arises, and what has occurred here, is that once that happens, and the lots have been sold along the roadway, the developer simply can't sign a deed over to the town because the developer didn't reserve the ownership of the roadway. And so, that requires the town to do one of two things, to either exercise eminent domain authority to take the roadway. It's a relatively simple process, but can't be done tonight because the prerequisites haven't been satisfied, or the town would need to accept deeds from each of the individual owners along the roadway and their mortgagees, because the mortgagees have the equitable or legal interest in the property, even though they retain the equitable interest. So it's a, it's a confusing rationale, but the bottom line is, although we prepared and anticipated taking action on Article 7 tonight, when we entered into further discussions with the developer, it became apparent to us that the developer didn't have the authority to convey the interest in the roadway that the town would be accepting. So the hope is to postpone this to another day, to table it, to indefinitely postpone it, and to take this up at a future town meeting after those prerequisites have been satisfied, to either acquire the interest from the owners or to proceed with the eminent domain process. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, thank you. So, yep. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to table, definitely postpone the article. All in favor of, who made that motion, Mr. Grady?
I mean the second.[976.12][976.12](Laughter).
I think that's who it was, yeah. Kathy made the motion. All right, so we had a motion and second to table indefinitely postpone this article. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, to table. All right, under Article 8, again, now this is one of the ones that we have kind of a motion that is the same length as the article, so this Article 8 will require a 2/3 majority. It says, "This property was not included in the Fairway Street acceptance process in 2018, should have also been given to the town in association with the roadway maintenance." The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. I can, I can read, I won't make the motion, but the motion that's going to be made under this says that the town authorized the Board of Selectmen to purchase, accept as a gift, or otherwise acquire a fee interest or lesser interest in the land with any improvements thereon located in Groveland, Essex County, Massachusetts, being shown as Lot 8D, not a building lot, and Lot B on a certain plan titled Plan of Land in Groveland, Mass., showing A&R Subdivision at Fairway Drive dated October 13, 2014, by Stephen J. Russo, Professional Land Surveyor, Millennium Engineering, Inc., recorded with the Essex County Registry of Deeds as Plan Book 446, page 14. Just say so moved, that's fine.
I'm so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, under Article 8. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 8, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous, it passes. All right, same thing with Article 9, okay? This is an article submitted by the Town Administrator, requires a 2/3 majority. Note: The property owner would like to give the parcel to the Groveland Municipal Light Department, and so they have the ability, if needed, to expand the substation at the adjacent property and to also help the town add amenities to the community trail. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. There will be a motion that says that the town authorized the Board of Selectmen, or looking for a motion, that says that the town authorized the Board of Selectmen to purchase, accept as a gift, or otherwise acquire a fee interest or lesser interest, in a portion of the land known as Main Street, assessors map 24, Lot 008, and being all or a portion of the land more fully described in the deed, recorded at Book 41592, page 194, in the Southern Essex District Registry of Deeds, said parcel consisting of 261,360 plus or minus square feet of open land, a portion of which shall be used for Groveland Municipal Light purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Municipal Light Department, and a portion of which shall be used for general municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen. Said portions generally shown in the sketch plan and filed with the Town Clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, under Article 9, any discussion?
Kathy Milk, Tackles, Volunteer. Are we to assume that these properties are being given to us as a gift, or are we purchasing them, and if we are, for how much?
All right, who's got an answer for that question?
There will be no exchange of monies.
Could you, they said they will be given to us, no exchange of monies.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Will it be taken off the, we're not wanting to be, like, taxed by, sorry, is that correct?
Question, again, if you can, I know it's a pain, but if you can, so that everyone can hear, just come to the mic if you know you're going to ask a question. But the question was, is it going to be taken off the tax rolls? Is that correct? So there won't be any taxes paid on it. Can somebody answer that for us?
That's correct.
Correct, that is a correct statement. I'm sorry, what is your name, sir? For the.
My name is John, A. Tackler.
All right, any further discussion, under Article 9? Do we know the answer to that? How much the tax?
I don't know an exact total, but it's not a lot on fairways. It might be larger for the parcel along Main Street, but I'm not 100% positive on that, I'm not.
Should we know that before we vote on it?
It's up to the town meeting what they want to do. You can cast your vote however you'd like. I mean, question was asked and answered, is there, are there any, any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote, under Article 9. All in favor of the motion, under Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Majority, 2/3 majority, passes. Excuse me. Okay, Article 10, similar situation. Article submitted by the Conservation Commission, requires a 2/3 majority. Note: A permanent conservation restriction will be conveyed on parcels acquired for conservation purposes by donation or land swap. The three parcels include the town forest and two abutting parcels may have had prior approval, however, this article groups them together for approval under a single CR. The Board of Selectmen recommends unfavorable action. But, and here, we're looking for a motion that says that the town authorized the Board of Selectmen to grant a conservation restriction to the Essex County Green Belt Association for consideration of the land, which is under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission, as follows. Three parcels of land identified by the Town of Groveland assessors as map 5, Lot 1, 35, 34 Wood Street, map 5, Lot 2F, Wood Street, and map 8, Lot 4M, Wood Street, for the purpose of preserving said properties in perpetuity as open space and for passive recreational use, except that area which is used for the water supply purposes or more fully shown on the sketch plan and filed with the Town Clerk, and so long as the fee interest shall be retained by the Town of Groveland under the care, custody, and control of Groveland Conservation Commission. So, again, I'm not sure what it means by not in favor, but if you still move that motion, we can discuss it.
Move favorable action.
That's right. And, second on that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Again, you know, just for clarity, even if somebody, the way that I've always done things, even if they're against it, they're against it, I like a motion for favorable action, because then when we go and vote, you vote yes, it means yes, you vote no, it means no. They can still say what they want to say, anyone can say what they want to say, it just makes it much easier to vote. Okay, we have a motion and second, under Article 10, any discussion? All right, just hang on just a second, we'll get right here first.
Mr. Moderator, yeah, Board of Selectmen discussed it, the pros and cons of it, and I believe that deliberation determined that why would we impose a CMR on us? We would, in essence, give up local control over it. So, why would you give away your rights when we can control it anyways? So, I think it's that simple.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Hi, Adriana Woods, 652 Salem Street. I would like to hear more from the Board of Selectmen, so thank you for sharing why you consider it unfavorable action, but could you go into more detail, or anyone else on the Board of Selectmen, why it's considered unfavorable, please? For those of us who have never seen this before, potentially, maybe give some background and explain your standing.
Well, I'll expand upon what I said, but currently, the town can control that property. So why would we allow a CMR where others could tell us, for instance, you can't, you know, walk on it, camp on it, ride a bike on it, go hunting on it? Why would you want to let some outside authority tell this town what it can and can't do with the property? So, we have that jurisdiction, and we would like to retain that jurisdiction.
Further questions, discussion?
Mike Dempsey, for the Conservation Commission. So, a conservation restriction for these three properties is formalizing what previous votes at town meeting have already voted and approved. This article ties the three parcels together and requests that the state legislature approve our vote to protect the parcels. The benefits of a positive vote on this article will enable common protection and maintenance on these three parcels. It will enable us to link trails through the parcels and also enable the town to apply for grants, both private and public, to potentially develop trails, maintain the parcels, and provide forest management. Conservation Commission requests that we get a 2/3 majority on this, it's pretty simple. We have other conservation restrictions, we've never had complaints about them or problems with them, so I think the Board of Selectmen disagree. I'm not sure I understand completely why, but, you know, I recommend that you vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Kathy Kestrelis, Board of Selectmen, 12 Hillview Drive. I'm on the floor because I'm a minority opinion on the Board of Selectmen, so it's proper for me to go to the floor to say that I can't profess to understand everything that goes with a conservation restriction, but I've seen the progress that we've made connecting properties in town and taking care of them and creating trails. So, I was in favor of this article because I felt that it would protect the properties and enable us to get additional funding, maybe to extend the rail trails and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Joe Dumore, 9 Cherry Tree Lane. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The restriction for the Essex County Green Belt Association is not a transfer of ownership, unless it is, and someone needs to explain that. Secondly, there is expertise that they provide in terms of using land, and it's an expertise that, if we don't have it comprehensively here in our town, would certainly be a great supplement. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, questions? All right, let's take a vote on Article 10. We have a motion that was read for favorable action and seconded. All in favor of that motion, under Article 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I'm going to say that is 2/3 majority favorable. Article 11, again, kind of a similar situation. Article submitted by the Conservation Commission requires a 2/3 majority. Note: A permanent conservation restriction will be conveyed on parcels required, I'm sorry, acquired for the conservation purposes by donation and a purchase using CPA funds. The two parcels of BC Park will be added to the existing conservation restriction on the park held by the state. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. There's a motion here, looking for, that says that the town authorized the Board of Selectmen to grant a conservation restriction to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for no consideration for the land identified by the Town of Groveland assessors as map 52, Lot 3A, Washington Street, and map 39, Lot 68, 733 Salem Street, for the purpose of preserving said properties in perpetuity as open space and for passive recreational use pursuant to Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, and as may be required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 12, with the fee to be retained by the Town of Groveland under the care, custody, and control of the Groveland Conservation Commission.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, under Article 11. Is there any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, under Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, Article 12, "To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 235, birth removal of the Town of Groveland general bylaws by amending the language to remove all reference to a special permit and refer instead to a permit or take any other action relative thereto." Note: This change is being made to conform to compliance with state laws. The town's general bylaws cannot require the applicant to obtain a special permit as a term is used in zoning context of General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, because the term "special permit" has a specific meaning in the context of zoning bylaws. Excuse me, the Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action.
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 235, the general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. All right, Article 13. All right, Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to amend its general bylaw, Chapter two fifty-nine, Section one, to delete the strike-through language and add the language in bold as follows. Section two fifty-nine dash one, consent of owner required for activity in private property. Amended four twenty-four twenty-three annual town meeting by Article sixteen. You can see it's striking out those lines and say, no person shall hunt or fire or discharge any firearms or any private property except with the written consent of the owner or the legal argument thereof, and such consent shall be carried at all times by any person hunting and upon request shall be shown to any police officer or officer of the Department of Conservation and Recreation or the property owner or his agent. So that's being struck. A person shall not fish, hunt, or trap on private land without permission of the owner or tenant thereof after such owner or tenant has conspicuously posted their on notices which bear the name of such owner or tenant and which state that fishing, hunting, or trapping on such land as the case may be is prohibited. If permission is granted, such consent shall be carried at all times by any person fishing, hunting, or trapping, and upon request shall be shown to any police officer or officer of the economic development, planning a conservation department or the property owner or his agent, or take any other action relative to. The article was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It says, note, this article is a result of comments received by the Attorney General when they received, I'm sorry, when they reviewed the general bylaws from the previous town meeting. They note that existing bylaw conflicts with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one thirty-one. The revised language would be in compliance with Mass General Law's Chapter one thirty-one. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action.
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter two fifty-nine, Section one of the general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
Motion and second under Article thirteen. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article thirteen, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
You guys are ready to roll. All opposed, say no. Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, passes. All right. Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter one eleven of the Town of Groveland general bylaws by adding a new Article seven entitled Conservation Commission as follows. One eleven dot three four, there shall be a Conservation Commission for the town in accordance with general laws, Chapter forty, Section eight C, for the promotion and development of the natural resources and for the protection of wetland resources of the town. One eleven dot three five, the Conservation Commission shall consist of seven voting members, all of whom shall be residents of Groveland, all of whom shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to staggered terms of three years. One eleven dot three six, the Conservation Commission may recommend to the Board of Selectmen an appointment of up to three non-voting associate members who shall not count towards a quorum. The associate member holds value to the commission in an advisory capacity and in quasi-training role to become a new member when a vacancy or reappointment occurs. The associate member shall be appointed for a one-year term or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It says, note, this article is presented to formalize the appointment process and makeup of the Conservation Commission.
I make a motion that the town amend Chapter one eleven of the general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
Motion and second under Article fourteen. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Unanimous, passes. All right. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to amend its general bylaws, Chapter three seventy, Unregistered Motor Vehicles, Section three seventy dash two to three seventy dash five, regarding unregistered motor vehicles, to include the following changes. Bold and underline, new, cross-out removed. Feel like Joe Biden. Was he doing that? No, I'm sorry. Reading. Pause. Okay. Yeah, I'm going to let Kathy take this, take this one.
Okay, so just prior to this meeting, we met with town council, and we do need to make a change. I'm going to make the motion. I guess I'll read. Oh my God. Do I have to read the whole thing? I'll read it. It's fine. To see if the town will vote, you already read the bold and underline. So starting with three seventy dash two, strike the word special, and just says permit required. A, strike the word special permit to keep more than one, do not strike the word one, leave it, because this is keeping it less restrictive. Cross off the word two. So it reads us, A, permit to keep more than one unregistered motor vehicle, strike the word S, the S at the end of vehicle, on any premises not within an enclosed structure after a duly called public hearing for which all abutters to the premises will have received notice may be granted by the Board of Selectmen if it finds that such keeping, A, is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw, B, will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and C, will not be a nuisance. And the explanation is that this allows permit granted for a reasonable length of time, and we changed the language because Section one allows for one vehicle. So now you can have more than one with the special permit. So. Joe, continue reading.
Yeah, so you can't, so you read all the change. I guess you just, that's not the motion. Do you want to just make the motion?
Yes. So with those, those are the only changes we made prior to this meeting, that first section. So that we're keeping the word one, unregistered motor vehicle on any premises not within an enclosed structure after a public hearing. And the motion is that the town amend Chapter three seventy of the general bylaws, Section three seventy dash two to three seventy dash five, as I have amended it tonight and therefore printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Kathy. Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. She bailed me out. Motion and second. Any discussion, questions? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Majority in favor, passes. All right, Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to amend its zoning bylaws by adding Section fifty dash thirteen dot two A five, number five, any construction of any new or expanded battery energy, energy storage system as set forth in Section fifty dash seven, battery energy storage systems are subject to site plan review under the regulations listed within that section. Article submitted by the Planning Board. This requires a two-thirds majority. Note, battery energy, energy storage systems require a different set of parameters and regulations than a typical site plan review. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Planning Board recommends favorable action.
I move that the town amend the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws by adding Section fifty dash one three dot two A five as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
All right, motion and second under Article sixteen. Any discussion?
I want to go back to the last one. I thought we had to vote for the change in that. We actually voted the article on Article fifteen.
All right, just.
Changed it, but never voted for the change.
The.
So when we voted, I thought we were voting on the change, not the rest of the articles, which never even read.
We did vote on the, the motion, the motion. The, the motion was to amend it as it is printed in the warrant, and the, the printing in the warrant is what Selectmen Castrenellis explained what was being changed and omitted, the bold and underline, all that stuff. So it was voted the way it's supposed to be voted. Is it correct?
Mr. Moderator, that's, that's correct. So there's a couple of ways to amend a warrant article. One is to make the original motion and then to await a floor amendment. That's not what occurred, and that, that's what would have prompted what the previous speaker indicated, that there would be two votes. The way that it was done in this instance is the, the mover of the motion opted to simply incorporate the adjustments into the, the original motion. And so that was, that was what was voted. It was voted, the article as a whole, with those adjustments that were specified by the Selectmen.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll carry on, and I believe we have a motion and a second under Article sixteen. Is there any discussion under Article sixteen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Goodwin, Hillview Drive, member of the Planning Board. I wanted to confirm that the board didn't meet on Article sixteen and did vote favorable, favorable action.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
That is a two-thirds majority in favor, passes. All right, so obviously, the next article is a handful of pages. Hang on just one second, okay? See how we want to handle this. It requires two-thirds majority. It says, note, it says, as technology progresses, B E S S are used more frequently, so the town is seeking to be proactive in allowing for B E S S with proper regulations in place, ensure they fit within the needs of Groveland, keep all residents safe. I think, does everyone take a minute or two just to read through that before we do anything else? Let's do that, okay? Couple minutes. All right, Alexa, set timer. How long?
Two minutes, three minutes?
Let's give us a timer. Yeah, we'll make our, we'll make our motion. A second, and then we'll get some explanation that's going on. Yeah. So Kathy, when we come back here, so you'll make, you're going to make this motion here?
Yeah. And then they'll have the special.
Then, I'm sorry?
Then, then.
Yeah, yeah, we'll explain, yeah, yeah. It is unanimous. So I, I know it's a lot of pages, and maybe well, people are still reading. I'm going to ask for a motion and second, and then we're going to get some explanation as what all those pages mean, and if anybody wants to keep reading before we vote, just let me know. We're, we're not trying to rush this thing, okay? But Kathy?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that the town amend the Groveland zoning bylaws, Article seven, to allow for battery, battery energy storage systems by adding a new Section fifty point seven as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second. I'm going to ask our holding inspector to give us a little bit of an explanation.
Hi, Sam Jocelyn, the Groveland Building Inspector? Uh, uh, sorry. All right, I'll just do the, there we go. I'm sure you all read that. It was very exciting. So essentially, what this does, right now, large battery storage systems and what those are are not what you put in your house. It is what you would, what a company, a utility would tie into the power lines to support our town if there was either brownouts, blackouts, just a high demand time. This doesn't make it so that there, let me back up. Currently, with no bylaw, we have little to no protections. The codes have not caught up to the technology yet. The state building code has little to nothing in it. NFPA eight fifty-five is the fire code that relates to it. It's limited in scope. So what we've done is we've taken, we being myself, the town planner, the head of our light department, a battery installer, and a member of our fire department who's a fire engineer and actually on the board that wrote NFPA eight fifty-five, took everything we could and put it into this bylaw to give us the option of asking for information. What this does for us, instead of them coming in right now under forty A three, if this isn't tied into the grid, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, they would be able to bring it in with, without our extensive review based on what limited reviews there are in NFPA, the building code, and just some general bylaws for site plan review, things of those nature. So this gives us a whole lot more protection as to what happens, how these facilities function, where they can go if they're in a sensitive location, what controls we have on for recapturing any water that's used during extinguishing of fires. The other portion, it gives us more controls for screening. If it's in an area where we want to be sensitive to neighbors, we can actually allow for that screening now. It also incorporates potential for training and equipment for our fire departments if that's so needed. So it really just expands what we can ask for. It doesn't prohibit them. It doesn't make them unpalatable to the town. But it does give us the option to look at everything and anything that is, is on the table that we're legally allowed to look at to bring these into town. They are something that's coming that people have asked for. I do West Newbury as well as Groveland, and there is interest in this through developers and also the power company themselves. They are looking for a way to capture that power that everyone's putting into these systems for solar or to provide power to houses during those high-peak hours, especially where our new codes are pushing everything towards electric. So hopefully, that helps you understand it a little bit better. It's really, it's something I, I felt strongly about getting in here to protect the town. I'm trying to do the same thing in West Newbury, because I think without it, we leave ourselves a little exposed.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for the discussion? All right, let's take a vote on Article seventeen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It is unanimous, passes. All right. Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2024, estimated annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses. I'm sorry, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. So we have set aside appropriations, committee administrative expenses of thirty-five thousand dollars. I'm sorry, is that, am I reading that right? Okay, reserves, open space, sixty-four thousand, historic preservation, sixty-four thousand, community housing, sixty-four thousand, or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, annual appropriation set aside is required for CPA funds at ten percent of total revenue, including any state match for open space, historic resources, and community housing. Any administrative expenses unspent are returned to the general CPA account. The recreation category has no set aside. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action.
I make a motion that the town appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 2024, the estimated annual revenues as follows. Under purpose, the set aside appropriations for committee administrative, administrative expenses is thirty-five thousand dollars. Under reserves, open space, sixty-four thousand dollars, historic preservation, sixty-four thousand dollars, community housing, sixty-four thousand dollars.
All right, so we have that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion under Article eighteen. Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article, the motion under Article eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
Majority, that's not a two-thirds, right? No, majority favorable. All right, Article nineteen. Actually, I'll, I'll just, Kathy, I'll read that so you don't have to read it. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, this phase one project will create a plan to convert the old dog park into a community garden space, including plans and costs for raised beds, infrastructure, and permaculture. The Groveland Community Garden will promote gardening as a recreational activity, enhance sustainability through growing food, promote community educational and intergenerational opportunities, and help beautify the pines. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. And we're looking for a motion that says that the town appropriate sum of up to four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2024 to be made available towards the design phase of a community garden. The project is managed by the Conservation Agent and the Town Administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second under Article nineteen. Is there any discussion? Yep, go ahead. Yeah, if you can, yeah, that'd be great.
That's just for the study, right? What's the total cost going to be? And the people that are going to be using it, are they going to be paying for the use of?
It's like, I think it's the best it's ever been, I like behind here, that's, good job, thank you. Article 20, Washington Hall on National Registry, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of up to $6,600 from the community preservation historic preservation reserve FY 20 dash 20, FY dash 2024 to be made available for placing Washington Hall on the National Historic Registry, the project is to be managed by the Groveland Historic Society and the town administrator under the CPA category of historic preservation, or take any action relative thereto. Again, I sort of blew it Kathy, but, uh, the article submitted by the community preservation, uh, committee, note, the historic, the Groveland Historic Society is requesting funds to place Washington Hall on the National Registry of Historic Places, this will enable the society to apply for future historic grants, the board of selectmen recommends favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action.
I make a motion, I make a motion that the town appropriate a sum of up to $6,600 from the community preservation preservation reserve FY 2024 to be made available for placing Washington Hall on the National Historic Registry, the project is to be managed by the Groveland Historic Society and the town administrator under the CPA category of historic preservation.
I'll second.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is this, is this a one-time fee or will it be longer?
I think I can answer, I, my understanding is it's a one-time fee to get on the registry and then the hall would be eligible to apply for extra funding through the federal government of this historic.
All right, if you're not gonna come to the mic, make sure you use a loud voice and state your name.
On the registry, how much money is that?
I'm sorry, sir, state your name first.
Kevin DeFeo from Sunner Street, you get on the registry, you gotta deposit money to keep it, maintain beyond that registry. Discovery rules and regulations beyond the registry, so we're gonna have to do more work, or pay more money to keep it on that.
Washington Hall is currently under the lease, long-term lease to the Historic Society, they manage the building, they provide all the ongoing maintenance fees that go along with it, so the town is not gonna be required to pay for any, um, ongoing maintenance if it becomes, uh, on the National Registry.
Thank you, further questions? I see one making his way.
Uh, Greg LeRac from Longwood Terrace, and again, I appreciate everything historic people do, sometimes the best intentions don't go wrong, West Newbury put a school on the historic register thinking it'd be great for all their fun things, they can't even replace their windows because you have to grasp one or do it to be historically accurate, it is really expensive to maintain it at that standard, again, I don't mind if you wanna do this, I'm just saying, anything you do to that building suddenly becomes not very cheap.
Thank you, further discussion, questions, comments? All right, let's take a vote on Article 20, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I'm gonna say that is a majority in favor, passes. Article 21, the article was submitted by the community preservation committee, note, this project will provide additional seating and shade at the pines recreation area for people visiting the park using the playground or splash pad, and those watching practice games on the small utility field, the board of selectmen recommends favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action, looking for a motion that says that the town appropriate a sum of up to $21,426 from the community preservation general reserve FY 2024 to be made available for the shade and seating, for shade and seating at the pines, the project is to be managed by the Groveland Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second, under Article 21, any discussion?
Don't we already have a gazebo there?
I believe we do, does somebody wanna answer that?
Yes, we have a gazebo.
Any, any other questions?
Another question? Is, is there another question beyond, is there a gazebo there?
I think that's it Kathy.
Okay.
Um, all right, okay, go ahead, yep.
Diane Plantamere, Mill Street, uh, my question is who's gonna manage the purchase of trees, I know that, uh, for instance, up at V.C., sometimes the Norway maples were taking over, they're an invasive species going on the Massachusetts invasive species list, so I wanna make sure that whoever manages the trees, purchase, purchases native, uh, appropriate trees, thank you.
I think we might have an answer coming up.
You do, hi everyone, my name is Annie Schindler and I'm your town planner and conservation agent, um, the shade structures we're looking at are not trees actually, they are metal structures with a, um, fabric sail, um, you tend to see them in a lot of new, of new parks and whatnot, so they're not trees, they're gonna be permanent structures.
Thank you.
They're not trees, they're gonna be permanent structures.
All right, thank you, um, any other questions, discussion under Article 21? All right, let's take a vote, all in favor of the motion under Article 21, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I think it passed, but we're gonna do that one more time, all in favor of the motion under Article 21, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I'm really, if I was a betting man, I'd say it's 60/40, but, we're gonna count, okay, so, so all in favor of the motion under Article 21, please raise your hand and keep your hand up until somebody tells you to put it down.
This is four.
Yes, yes.
I guess that's wrong. It's gonna be more like 75.
All right, there's 68 in favor, 21 against, that's why I don't vote, so it passes. It passes. All right, Article 22, this article is sub- uh, submitted by the community preservation committee, note, this is a con- conversion project to digitally transform Groveland town report records to be secure and accessible, the project will scan 21 hardcover, 53 softbound, and 46 staple-bound books of town of Groveland annual reports, it will, it will provide access for town employees and residents to view and research the historical records, the board of selectmen recommends favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action, and looking for a motion that says that the town appropriate a sum of up to $33,000 from the community preservation historic preservation reserve FY dash 2024 to be made available for the town clerk scanned historic documents. Uh, the proj- sorry, hang on, hang on, the town, my, the project is to be managed by the town clerk and the town administrator in the CPA category of historic preservation, go ahead.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second under Article 22, any discussion? All right, let's take a vote, all in favor of the motion under Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
It is a majority in favor, it passes. All right, Article 23, note, this, uh, sorry, article submitted by the community preservation committee, note, this project is an effort to restore a town park of recreational and historical significance for the purpose of public enjoyment, education, and recognition, during this initial phase, a con- consultant will design the improvements, research any issues, and provide cost estimates for the future work, the board of selectmen recommends favorable action, the finance board recommends favorable action, looking for a motion that says that the town appropriate a sum of up to $30,800 from the community preservation general reserve FY dash 2024 to be made available for Perry Park design phase, the project is to be managed by the conservation agent and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second under Article 23, any discussion?
$30,000, God, no.
All right, um, the, the question was, is, what's the 30,000, is $30,800, what, what is the purpose of the $30,800, what's it gonna do? Can somebody answer that for us?
Uh, it's the design phase, so that involves engineering and landscape architecture for the park.
Okay, further questions?
Yeah.
All right, again, if, if you've got one, and again, I, you know what, I can hear, but it really, if you can go to a mic, it's better, it's better for the TV, right, too, isn't it, if everyone does that, um, for those who are playing along at home with us, thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the $30,000 is gonna be a design phase, right? After that, what's the final cost gonna be?
We don't know yet, so we need the design phase to find out, to find out what we're gonna do, I am, I can hear myself.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's the design phase, so that's just, that's just to, first, we have to talk to a butters and it's to incorporate parking and engineering and landscape architecture.
Okay, thank you.
My ears ring.
All right, um, any other questions, just, yep, go ahead, make your way, we'll, we'll wait.
I have things to say, but I would, okay. Uh, so, hi everybody, my name is Stephanie Bartelt, I live on Chestnut Street, and I wrote the proposal to restore Perry Park using community preservation funding, um, I am asking for your vote for Perry Park, Perry Park includes a Civil War memorial, uh, it sits facing a Paul Revere Bell and is across the street from an Underground Railroad, it has significant historical value. Uh, as a neighborhood resident, I enjoy the park every single day, uh, when I walk my dog, rain or shine, on warm days and cold days, I sit on the benches and contemplate life, I watch kids play in and around the park, I've even hooked up my retired sled dog to a sled in that park, last year, I watched mature ash trees die and historic benches vandalized and tires and oil pans dumped in the park. My vision is to restore the park to its natural beauty, I wanna use a scientifically researched and evidence-based method to remove the Japanese knotweed infestation, to show that it can be done if you do it the right way, my vision is a beautiful vista of ferns in its place, my vision is to replace a dead scape of lawn with native grasses, flowers, and sedges that invite pollinators and fireflies, not repel them, my vision is to plant native trees like the shag bark hickory, which is a host tree for not just swallowtail butterflies, but Luna moths and dagger moths, and its, its bark also provides shelter for endangered bats, my vision is a low or even no mow, no maintenance park for the enjoyment of people that restores an unbalanced ecosystem and teaches other people how to do that too. I ask you to do your research on the Community Preservation Act and find out all the exciting ways that we can use it, thank you.
Thank you.
Inny Burger, Five Pine Wood Lane, I would like to speak out in support of this project, uh, Perry Park used to be a lovely little park where children could play and families were having picnics, over the years, it's, it's become neglected and is in di- dire need of, uh, restoration, this project would restore the park to the way it used to be, and fortunately, there are, there are funds available for this in the CPA fund, I think Groveland is very lucky to have the CPA because it brings a lot of money from the state and we're able to do projects at a fraction of the cost that it would cost without the CPA funds, thank you.
Beth Greenhagen, Seven Star Road, so Perry Park, you may be asking yourself, why do we need this? Well, we need a quiet refuge, open to our residents to enjoy native trees and flowers, we need a gathering place for family picnics, we need a place to sit and enjoy the outdoors, Perry Park used to be all these types of recreation and it can be again if you approve this, and while I have this, I just have to say that I'm so impressed by all the projects that the Community Preservation Act have done since I lived here, Washington Hall, the three playgrounds, including making Bagnell finally ADA compliant playground, the rail trail, and just this last weekend, the rewilding of V.C. Park, it, they have made our town so much more beautiful, and I hope they can continue to do it, and that they will add on, um, housing, thank you.
All right, further discussion? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, uh, this is a question, and I don't know who can answer it, um, for the record, I do support open space and the development of it, my, my question is this, uh, with this particular article, along with others, we're asked to approve funds to, uh, build something in the year that there is a possibility that the CPA may be repealed, so my question is, what actually happens if that happens? Thank you.
Does somebody wanna ask?
Yes, um, the funds, anything voted tonight, the funds are there, we don't put an article on the warrant if we don't have funds for it, so, um, the design phase would be funded, um, if the CPA were, um, removed after that, then, um, you'd have a lot of competing needs, um, going forward, 'cause obviously we have a few things in the design phase, but, um, Perry Park is an important, um, part of our town and it has certainly fallen into a state of disrepair, I don't know if people have noticed cars just kinda parking all over it and, uh, that invas- I'm not a plant person, but I know that tall grass stuff that's taking over the park will continue to take over that park if we don't do something, so this would at least give us the information and design of what could be there, and the intention is to have something there that doesn't require a lot of maintenance, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin DeFeo, Sunner Street, last year, there was $1.4 million of CPA money on, at the town meeting, this year, we're at $1.5 million at the meeting tonight, last year's school override was only 1.2, something to think about.
All right, thank you.
The gentleman just answered my question, what the total CPA funds were.
Okay, thank you. We all set, take a vote? All right, um, all in favor of the motion under Article 23, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no?
No.
The majority in favor, it passes. Article 24. All right, um, Pines Parking Enhancements. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of up to $523,110 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY-2024 to be made available for Pines Parking Enhancements. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation and take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, this project will provide additional parking and final paving and markings of parking space at the Pines to improve safety, enhance circulation, and maximize space while offering accessibility to a town-owned recreational facility. This project would also provide a pedestrian connection between the Town Hall complex parking lot and the Pines to increase parking and access between both areas. The Board of Select recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Kathy, you can just go ahead and make that motion.
Also, I'll make a motion that the town appropriate a sum of up to $523,010-- no, let me say that one more time, sorry-- $523,110 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY-2024 to be made available for the Pines Parking Enhancement. The project is to be managed by the Pines, by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
All right, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second under Article 24. Any discussion?
Yeah, you know, so I go to all the chairs. If we were to spend all the money for the CPA, doesn't that deplete the account by half in the CPA funds?
Somebody have an answer? Okay.
No, the, none of the articles, if all the articles are voted tonight, will not deplete the CPA. There, there is not 1.5 million in the CPA, there is more than that.
My question was depleted by half, sir.
I don't understand the question.
I guess, asking--
What, I don't--
Do we, I think people want to know how much is in the CPA fund. Is that correct? All right, let's take a look. Where is it, it's in, what's, what appendix is that in? Can we help people out?
I don't think it says it in there.
Yeah?
Okay, um, the balance with all projects approved tonight will be $1.7 million, so we're not gonna deplete the account.
They were asking how much is in.
Well, 1.7 plus, uh--
1.5.
Yeah, so it's 3.2 million, approximate.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Go ahead. Can, can you step up the mic, Greg, please? Yeah, it, it really, I know that people are nearby. Again, I keep asking, just, let's, if you think you can ask a question, just go to the mic, I'm not gonna not recognize you, okay?
Greg LeBrecq, Eleven Ballman Terrace. I thought this was pretty expensive until I read the note at the bottom. Is there a break apart of how much that switchback is gonna cost between Town Hall and coming down, back and forth to make it handicap accessible in this cost? Because I was guessing the asphalt probably be about 120 grand, so I'm just wondering if there's a break apart for those two items.
Somebody have an answer to that question?
There's no break--
You had to come up with this number.
So there's no breakdown, per se. We talked to the engineering firm that we had asked for, for an estimate, which is also the walkway engineering of $25,000, and they had proposed that we set aside that amount of money, uh, for an estimate, because they're not sure where the location will exactly be based upon the top and topog-- or the topography of the land and where it will be placed. Will it be placed further towards the library, or will it be placed further towards the skate park? And that will change how much of a switchback you'll have based upon the location.
Okay. All right, other question? Other questions, discussion? Yep.
So, um, well, first of all, you can, as you can see, costs have definitely gone up. We've all seen that, right? Things cost more than they did, um, before the pandemic, right? We know this. But it doesn't change the, the things in town that could be preserved and made more beautiful. Um, so it's kind of your decision to decide, do you want to connect the Town Hall and the Pines Recreation Area and make it more accessible and easier to use and preserve it to be a beautiful area? It has a historic, um, connection to the racetrack. Um, many of us have spent years, you know, I had a boat for years, and we spent a lot of fun down at the dock there, and, um, the Town Hall and the Pines Recreation Area are not connected. You can kind of stumble down the hill somewhat if you want to, but for most people, it's difficult, and I think that this would be a, a significant improvement and beautification to a park and an area that is already very, very worthwhile to preserve. But again, sure, it's a lot of money. This is what it costs. Um, we don't take this lightly on the Board of Selectmen as we review these. I'm not saying I'm an expert on switches or whatever, but I do look through everything to the best of my ability, and, um, we did recommend favorably on this, and, and we hope you will, too. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Yep? Hang on, she's first, go ahead.
Hi, Adriana Woods, 652 Salem Street. Please don't read anything into my question, because I'm, I'm not implying one way or the other, I'm really just curious. I would like to hear from someone from the Board of Selectmen and from the Finance Board as to what factors you take into consideration selecting something as either favorable or unfavorable when it comes to the CPC. For instance, does a favorable action just mean it doesn't negatively impact the town budget, which is separate from the CPC? Or are you saying it's favorable in the long-term usage of CPC funds? Just trying to figure that out. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a try, and then I can pass it down if others want to. I mean, we, we review the projects that are brought before us, knowing that they've already been reviewed by the CPC Committee, and one of our members sits on that committee as well. Um, we do ask a lot of questions about them, about why it costs this much, um, and sometimes, you know, understanding that as these projects are being estimated, this is not, we're not putting them out to bid, right? We can't put them out to bid at that point, but you can try to gather, um, best estimates of what it's going to cost. Um, so this would be the money up to this amount. So once you vote it, they cannot spend more than that. Okay, so it restricts it, and, um, we don't take it frivolously, we don't look at it as, well, if there's money in there, sure, fine, spend it. No, absolutely not. Um, over the years, we have sent projects back that we didn't feel were of significant benefit to the town. So we try the best of our ability, just as you do here tonight, each one of you, to make your best decision, but we do try. Thank you.
Daniel McDonald, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. We all have our own opinions. My decisions are whether or not these things are needs-wants, bells and whistles, um, what projects might be more worthy of spending the money now versus saving the money for later. Some of these projects, I don't think we need. Uh, this particular one, uh, to build a staircase and connect, uh, to, uh, Town Hall, I think it's practical, somewhat of an infrastructural improvement. Um, if we had, uh, you know, the, the two, um, signature facilities within our town are the Pines and, uh, Washington Park. I think they're the most used. Uh, I think they are the most significant, and the town reaps the most benefit out of them. So if we could, um, build a staircase and improve the parking over there at the Pines, I think that would be, um, of all the projects, worthy. I voted against many of the others, but, um, that's how I made my decisions.
Anyone else, go ahead.
Jason Aves on the Select Board. I know when I look at a lot of the projects, this one in particular, I, I consider safety as being one of the biggest reasons. And I like the projects to be done properly and completely, and it's, I think as a Groveland resident, I think it's something that we deserve. We have the CPA in effect, and it's a surcharge that's on your property taxes that is set aside specifically for these projects. And when we get a project in front of you that's gonna enhance the access to the Pines and parking for the special events we have, specifically Groveland Day, where I see many parents struggling to get up and down that hill with small children, uh, coolers, and everything else, I think it's, uh, well worth the money to spend on that, as well as now that there's a lot more going on at the Pines, and it's really beginning, beginning to get recognized, the additional parking is, is definitely needed.
All right, does anyone in the Finance Committee want to take a whack at it?
Sure, I'll comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hey, Watson, Board of Selectmen. Uh, I, when I take a vote on these, and I have opposed some of them, uh, this, this one, I think, makes sense. Uh, we're, we're running out of space down at the Pines as far as for parking. With, with all the activities going on there, uh, we, we need additional parking. Can't park out on Main Street on the state road. Utilizing the Town Hall parking lot makes sense, uh, and because of the banking out there between the two, between the Pines and the Town Hall, it needs to be handicap accessible. So this makes sense to, uh, to put it in with all, uh, a lot of things going on at the Pines, and we're, uh, we, we need additional parking. Thank you.
All right, sorry, go ahead, down here.
So what I take into consideration when I vote on a project like this is really, you know, I want to make sure that I think it could benefit the town. I want to make sure that it's a reasonable proposal, that there's reasonable people in charge, involved, in control, and then after that, even if it's not necessarily my own priority, I think it should go to the town meeting to have the vote. I think that as long as everything is accurate, reasonable, and responsible, then I think it should be the voters of the town in your hands to make those decisions. And that's consistently the issue with CPA, and, you know, the, the notion that CPA proposals are done in a vacuum is just false. It's always done in open meeting, and it's always voted by this body of people. Whoever shows up to the town meeting are the people who make those decisions. So, but yes, we do vote no when we think it's just not, not appropriate, not the time, and that there's not going to be, you know, the, the follow-through, um, there, but, but that's to me, to get it to the town meeting when appropriate.
All right. Yeah, any other comments, questions?
Rita Murray, Seven Briscoe Road. Someone mentioned about, um, mothers trying to take their kids down, um, the hills, carrying a cooler. It's more difficult if the, if it stays.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, um, let's, uh, let's, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion under Article 24, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Majority favorable, passes. All right. All right, Article 25. Uh, the article submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Note, Shanahan Field is primarily used by Groveland youth and Penntucket soccer, where parking is limited on-site, forcing parents and children to park on the street, creating a dangerous traffic situation and risk for young children. This project proposes to create designated parking to provide better and more broad access to parking and improve the vehicular circulation at the site. The Board of Select recommends favorable action. I have a note here that says the Finance Board, um, apparently doesn't have a recommendation. They have two voted favorable, two voted unfavorable. Um, we are looking for a motion that says that the town appropriated a sum of up to $886,800 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY-2024 to be made available for parking creation at Shanahan Field. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I imagine there's gonna be some discussion. Anyone want to speak to this?
Hi, my name is Larry Alardo, I live on Mill Street. Um, I have been active in, uh, Groveland soccer for probably the last 15 to 20 years. Um, when Shanahan Field started as a soccer field, it was originally used for U-12, U-14, um, players, and that required a very large field, which took up the majority of that space. Um, now, the space is being used by much younger players, um, including some, um, five, six, seven-year-olds, and so there are three fields now which can operate on the same space, and that means that there are three times as many people coming to this area, which has congested the area, congested all the traffic and the number of bodies coming into the area, um, exponentially. So I think, you know, from being someone who lives in that area and drives that road some quite often on Saturday mornings, and all the cars that are parked on the side of the road does present a really dangerous situation, and, um, I have personally seen, um, kids exiting cars, um, onto the road, um, and, uh, you know, kids wanting to go to a soccer game can be really rambunctious. So I just see that, you know, that we are, um, find ourselves in a situation where we need to protect our own children and the children coming into our community to play these soccer games, and I think this parking lot and, um, what the plans are will really help improve that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Matthew Guillory, Chestnut Street. The current parking situation at Shanahan Field has become untenable and is highly unsafe, whether on the sidewalk where most people are currently parking, or in the very small nearby ill-defined parking area. Kind of goes without saying, but children jumping out of vehicles into an active roadway is quite dangerous. Residents living nearby can attest to this. Building the new larger parking area is a solution that is supported by a police chief. We can vote here tonight to solve this important safety issue. It's time to make Shanahan Field a safer place for all residents, especially our children. Thank you for your time.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question. I coached, uh, Penntucket soccer, youth soccer, for 10 years and spent six glorious years down at, uh, Shanahan. There was danger then, and there's danger today. This is the only article with the word "dangerous" in it, so there isn't anybody in this room that doesn't care about safety. However, I have tremendous respect for people that serve, including people on the Finance Committee, and you, you're probably gonna make me worried, but could people that felt that this was unfavorable, could you explain the financial reasons why this project is a concern to you? Thank you.
Jim Scanlon. I'm not against expanding the parking lot, but when something approaches, um, a million dollars, this should have been broken down at the phases. You can't, all of a sudden, I don't even know what, what it's gonna look like, okay? I would have preferred an engineering survey, mark out the area, so we get, so we know what it's gonna be. I mean, s-- the CPA is wonderful, but when you, there should be some more rules around 800-- we, we just got a federal grant for water and sewer for 800 and somewhere, and that's a big deal. This is a big deal, and I think we need to change some of the processes, uh, break it down, because this is a major capital expenditure. Major. Can anyone name a project that costs more than this? No. Well, like the high school, that's 65% we're talking about, you know, so I just feel that, you know, two CPA meetings, okay? And, because it's a lot of money, it's a big project, so I don't know what it means when the Recreation Committee's gonna manage it. We've already got backlog of projects from last year and the year before, okay? So we're gonna fit this in? So anyway--
All right.
I, I've been in software development my whole life, and when projects get this big, we break it down into deliverables, and then we go over alternatives, you know? And then you explain why you picked this alternative. This is a-- This is a lot of money. I mean, I would have, Article 24, my wife was handicapped for 14 years, so I'm hypersensitive to accessibility. So, but this one here, I support it, I understand the safety issues, but we've got a lot of projects in the fire. And this one here, we need to spend a little more fiduciary responsibility. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Further discussion, question?
Stephen Hamble, 127 Main Street. I did want to call attention, there is an engineering drawing over there of the design. I wasn't involved with it, but I just noticed it on the way in. So the statement that we don't know what we're building, there's a proposal for what we're building there. If anybody wants to take a loop. I think, I did watch the Finance Board meeting where that was discussed. I believe there was a case, oh, it was brought up that this was at the town meeting last year. It was tabled because there was some fear and certainty doubt on the butters and things like that. That wasn't really resolved, so there was enough uncertainty that people voted to table it. And the estimate was lower, but my understanding is that there was a request from the police chief to have lighting installed at this, which is a good part of the estimate. And there was drainage, and that's why the engineering drawing was made. So as a parent of children who play soccer, it's the only field that we go to traveling around that doesn't have appropriate parking. So I think it would be a great thing for us to do.
Thank you. Let's, right here first, then we'll come here.
I actually live in the area. I also have kids who played soccer, who played on that field, and want something that I would like to see that, not a big expense, but included in this plan, is the fact that some people walk to that field. And the safety, when all those cars are parked on the side of the road and people are crossing Main Street from the corner where Gardner runs into it, nobody stops. I've actually made, I'm one of those, one of those people that I've called the Highway Department, I've called the Police Department and said, if you not get a, if you don't plan to repaint it, can, do I have permission to go get some reflective paint to do it myself? And I've actually considered just doing an outline of a human. But, you know, it really, it's extremely dangerous, and I can speak to the fact that cars or no cars, that crossing there is very dangerous. So I do approve of this happening simply because I really have seen how dangerous it is.
Thank you. I'm sorry, for the town clerk name?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Lynder Ruiz, I live on Old Gardner.
Yeah, over here.
Adam Haywood, 15 Abbott Street. Well, I'm sympathetic to the need for parking at Shanahan Field. I'm a parent, my children played soccer there as well. $880,000, that's a bit much, we can do better than that. We employ a highway department with all the equipment and people that we already pay their salaries. Why aren't we just buying some material and having them do it? We can do way better than a million dollars for a parking lot. It does not need to be paved in gold. All we need is a parking lot similar to Pipe Cave, lay down some gravel road base, call it a moment. If we want to go back at a later date and put pavement over it, the structure's already in to put pavement over it.
Thank you.
Steve Baker, 5 Sunset Circle. I think, you know, a lot of people have talked about the fact that there's safety issues down there. And folks that, you know, I live a little bit further away, but I drive down there all the time. Sorry, I live a little, I live a little bit further away, but I drive down there all the time, you know? All it's going to take is one distracted driver, one kid getting away from a parent, and we're going to wish that we had spent the money to do this. I also think it's important, it's up to that amount, right? If I understand correctly, and maybe somebody could answer this, it can't go out to bid until we approve it. So they can't spend more than that, right? So, you know, could it be less? I mean, I'm guessing probably, right? And maybe somebody could speak to that, but that, you know, I think we need to address this before something bad happens.
Thank you.
Dennis McNulty, Six Valley Farm Road. Actually, Steve, Mr. Baker just said the same exact thing I was going to say. Safety, you cannot put a number on a kid's life. If one of those children, I have three young children, if they jump in between those two cars and they come out, cars move way too fast to be able to stop, as well as the cost. It is up to that amount, we do not know yet what it's going to be, so I just wanted to let that know. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, I'm sorry, we, Selectman McDonald.
Daniel McConnell, Chairman. One concern I had was for the amount of money, how many additional spaces of parking are we going to get? And the other issue was, what does it do, if anything, for the sidewalks along the fields that people park on? So if they continue to do that, I don't know that it will solve the safety issue unless you put up no parking signs all along the perimeter of that field. So can anyone tell me, because I'm Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, how many additional parking spaces are we going to get out of 800-plus thousand dollars? If it's only two, it's pretty expensive parking spaces.
I guess, can I, the question is, is there somebody here that can explain what that drawing entails to the?
How much more, how much more capacity do we get? Does anyone know?
So there'll be 86 additional spaces with four van-accessible parking spaces added. Additionally, with this, we would then be able to apply for additional grant funding to improve sidewalks all along Main Street from the downtown center to the rail trail and get those improvements because we invested in the additional parking location over at Shanahan. So there'd be 86 additional spaces plus the four accessible parking spaces that would be accommodated by the conceptual plan presented to you. And to answer the question that is correct, it is up to the $800,000. Once we go out to bid with prevailing wage rates, it could come in. I've heard people say that they could probably come in around $600,000. If that's the case, then that money will be returned to the CPC and can be allocated for future projects. It's just to give us a little bit more flexibility with the price materials, the bidding process, as well as prevailing wage rates, which we would be subject to as a town project.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
What, if anything, would be done to, I guess prohibit the parking along the property? Because if there's a safety issue and people are still parking on the sidewalk, they're still parking on the sidewalk, getting out of cars on a busy road.
So we would put no parking signs and it would be enforced by the Police Department because there would be designated parking locations for cars to park at, which currently there is not.
All right, somebody over here, we, I think we had one more question over here, then we'll.
I gotta grow a few inches. The project at the Pines, can that be put on hold? Because it's more important for the kids at soccer.
It's already voted, yeah. All right, let's, let's go ahead. We have a lot of discussion. We have a motion in a second under Article 25. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Majority favorable, it passes. All right, let's move on. Article 26. To see if the town vote is set forth below, and I know you're going to change that. To set the annual spending limits for the following eight revolving accounts established in the general bylaws for the fiscal year 2025 or take any other extra relative thereto. You can see the Bagnon Summer Program is $200,000, Council on Aging is $15,000, but I understand we're going to have an amendment to that shortly. Fire Department CPR Class 6,000, Groveland Day 30,000, Pines Boat Ramp 25,000, Recreation Operation and Maintenance 75,000, Wetlands Protection Act 20,000, Visi Memorial Park $130,000. The article submitted by the Town Administrator. Note Reports on Revolving Funds May Be Found in Appendix A. The Board of Selectmen, I believe before we do that, we have an amendment to one number, so go ahead.
Would you like me to make that amendment as a motion?
Well, we can do it either way.
Do you want me to make the, I'll tell you what it is. So the Council on Aging has the funds in their revolving account, but they need the cap of $15,000 raised up to $25,000 for the year because some of their expense money has been reallocated to a salary for the coming year. And we just didn't catch this before it got into print. So I can make the amendment if you want to vote that first, or I can just amend this as a motion and read the numbers as they would be.
Kathy, why don't you just go ahead and just make the amendment and we'll do that way.
Okay, so I would like to amend the Council on Aging spending limit for fiscal year 2025 to $25,000.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote. This is just on amending $15,000 to $25,000. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, so we have an amended article. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to vote favorable on the article as amended.
I'll second.
Yes, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous, favorable action. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $125,000 from the following, actually, I'll just read it as the motion. So this is, the Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action, the Finance Board recommends favorable action. Looking for a motion that says that the town transfer the sum of $125,000 from the following. $40,000 from the Groveland Municipal Electric Department Operation Account, $85,000 from fiscal year 2024 Town Free Cash. Somebody move that?
Second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, under Article 27, any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 27, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. All right, we'll do the same thing here. Article 28. Get to that point, yeah. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action, the Finance Board recommends favorable action. Looking for a motion that says that the town transfer $343,273 from free cash to the following accounts. $50,000 to the stabilization fund account, 8500-dash, whole bunch of numbers, 040, 497, 000, 000, 000. Okay, $50,000 to the capitalization, capital stabilization fund account, again, 8525, lots of numbers. $50,000 to the municipal building improvements account, number 100-1-192, more numbers. $5,000 to the MS4 stormwater permit account, 2452-421, and more numbers. $5,000 to the personal buyback account, number 2410-040s. Keep going, $4,844 to the opioid settlement account, number 2550991. $64,967 to purchase a line cruiser for the Police Department. $25,000 to fund electrical study for the Town Hall Complex. $68,462 to purchase a generator for the Town Hall Complex. $20,000 to the match, to the match for the FEMA FY 2025 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, under Article 28. Any discussion?
Just a question, what is opioid, opioid settlement account?
So the town signed on to the lawsuit that was put forward by the Attorney General for the State of Massachusetts as, for the settlement of the opioid abuse with some of the larger pharmaceutical companies such as Johnson &amp; Johnson. And as our share, that is a portion of the share that will be allocated to Groveland based upon our population size and our proximity to the pandemic.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Brian Cannizaro, Groveland Commons. I have a quick, pretty simple question. One of the line items here calls for 64, basically $65,000 for a new line cruiser for the Police Department. They seem to get a cruiser every year, but my question is this. The Fire Department, back on Article 26, has only allocated $6,000 for CPR classes. They don't get the training that, they don't get the money that they need for the training that they need. Goff, if there was a major accident in the town, the Fire Department takes control of the town, the police do not. So my question is this, why is such large amounts of money being given to the police every year for new cruisers? But the Fire Department gets nothing, or close to nothing. Can someone answer that?
I can, I can answer some of that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So the, the Police Department does get a line cruiser every year. That goes into a rotation so that all of their fleet is current and usable. I don't have the exact numbers with me, but you could follow up and see how much the Fire Department got from our ARPA funds. They got a substantial amount of funding to their vehicles over the, the ARPA funds were American Rescue Funds that came from the federal government for, through the COVID crisis. And so the, the Fire Department is, I believe the last time we met with the chief, actually, he said we are all set for now. They're happy with their fleet, based on our conversations.
But the normal procedure for the Finance Department is to basically figure in every year for them to get a new cruiser, where all the other departments, whether it's the DPW or the Fire Department, they have to come before these committees and basically beg for money to buy any sort of level of equipment for them, where the police seem to get their cruiser every year.
No, we have annual conversations with the police as well as all of the departments.
I think the thing you have to remember too is, the cruisers go 24/7/365. They hardly ever turn off. So the mileage and the use, even though the mileage may be low, that engine runs almost continuously. So we take the oldest vehicle out of service and we replace it with a new vehicle. It's, it's not that you don't get the training. We always support any training request that we get from the chief, and I don't think we've done anything differently this year. But the cruisers are a vital part of road safety. I know they're first responders on 911 calls. I know that personally from a medical issue I just had a couple of months ago. So it's vital that the cruisers be kept up in top-notch shape because they are really the first ones on the road because they're always on the road. So it's, it's more of a necessity than a want. And we've never rejected any of the needs of the Fire Chief that he's come to us and explained the vital nature of. We've never said no.
Okay, I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm just a regular citizen and I'm kind of ignorant to the process, but when I, you know, go around town myself, you know, cruisers are sitting here, usually sitting off somewhere off to the side. Don't know if their car is running, but they're sitting there doing whatever. And it's like, you know, when I come to these type of meetings and you see the expenditures that are afforded to the Police Department, and don't get me wrong, they're well-needed, I'm sure, but at the same time, the Fire Department, they're the true first responder. The police only can do so much. The police, you know, aren't going to run into a fire building, I mean, a building that's on fire because they're not trained to, they can wait outside for the firemen to do that. So what I'm saying is that, you know, it just seems like it's kind of lopsided when it comes to the fire.
I think you've made your point, thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Court point. Yep, go ahead.
Sir, and all due respect, I mean, each, this is bottom-up in terms of the budgets and the process. Each department head is responsible for submitting a budget. And they come up with the numbers that they believe will be necessary for their priorities within their budget. That percolates up. It's not an ivory tower here and Board of Selectmen down or Finance Committee down. It's departments heads, and they're in the know. I don't pretend to know, nor will I pontificate that I know how to run a Fire Department or a Police Department. So if the Fire Department needs $6,000 for CPI training, that comes up. We're not telling them, that's all you get. If the Police Department has a priority, they want cruisers. If that's how they want to spend their 1. whatever million dollars, and maybe they decide they need that more than they need another police officer or something else. So their expertise comes into play in developing their department budget, and then it's presented upward. So I don't pick and choose between fire and police, never have. You know, I listen to what they, they want, it comes up, goes to the Finance Committee, it comes before the Board of Selectmen, and it comes before you. It's, it's bottom-up, not top-down.
Thank you. Over here.
Hi, Joe Santa Paula, 75 Washington Street. I'm a CPR instructor. This $6,000 is for like the general public taking CPR classes, so that can be funded, so we can buy materials, mannequins and all of that. So that's kind of like revolving things, that was like a maximum. That's not the training budget for the Fire Department.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that.
Thank you. All right, should we vote this one? Let's do it. All in favor of the motion under Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes, unanimous. Article 29. Article 29. Let's see. To see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer from the PEG access and cable-related fund the sum of $150,000 to be expended under the direction of the town administrator to fund cable access services, supplies and equipment for the fiscal year 2025 or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Cable Department. We have favorable recommendations from the Board of Selectmen and Finance Board, and Kathy, why don't you just go ahead and read the motion?
I move that, I move that the town transfer from the PEG access and cable-related fund the sum of $150,000 to be expended under the direction of the town administrator to fund cable access services, supplies, equipment for fiscal year 2025.
Do a second.
Second.
Yeah, all right.
Sorry.
All right, stay with us. Motion and a second.
Did it pass my...
Yeah, it is. Do we have any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion under Article 29, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article 30, this was submitted by the Conservation Commission, favorable recommendations by Board of Selectmen and Finance Board, looking for a motion that says that the town transfer the sum of $8,771 from the Conservation Commission fees account to the Conservation Commission agent account for fiscal year 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article, the motion under Article 30, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article 31. This article is submitted by the town administrator. Note, the treatment of premiums and surplus proceeds were changed by the Municipal Modernization Act relative to immediate COVID-19 recovery needs. Excluded debt must be, must treat the premium as general fund revenue and the legislative body must vote the amount of the premium. We have favorable recommendations from both the Select Board and the Finance Board, looking for a motion that says that the town appropriate $5,012 from the premium received upon the sale of bonds or notes issued for the Center Street land purchase, which are subject, which are the subject of a proposition to an apothetic exclusion by the town, to pay cost of the project being financed by the bonds or notes and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project by the same amount.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second under Article 31. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 31, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. All right. Article 32. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, again, favorable recommendation by both the Select Board and the Finance Board, for a motion that says that the town transfer a sum to be determined as follows, from receipts reserved for sale of town buildings, $91,370.70, and any interest earned thereon until the date of transfer.
That's not the right amount.
What did I say?
You didn't read the amount right. You said $300.
Oh, I'm sorry. $91,370.70. It's just like when the authors put typos in books and just seeing if you're paying attention. Thank you. And any interest earned thereon until the date of transfer, premiums received on sale of bonds between 11/7/16 to 12/7/21, $44,956.62 to the following items which have a useful life of greater than five years, highway garage replacement, public safety generator. Somebody like to make that motion?
I make a motion that the town transfer a sum to be determined as follows, from receipts...
How you read it all?
Oh, you read it all?
Yeah.
Okay, so moved.
Yep.
Second.
All right, we have, thanks, sorry. Motion and a second under Article 32. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article 33. This article is submitted by the Finance Board, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Board recommends favorable action, look for a motion that says that the town fix the salary and compensation of all elective and appointed officers of the town for the 12 months ending June 30, 2025, fixings of salaries according to Articles Number 34, Number 38 and 39.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion under Article 33, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. So we're coming to the point of our evening where we're going over the omnibus, and again for our returning town meeting folks, it might look a little different. So if we look at, in Appendix B, is all the figures that make up this group of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 categories, total budget. So I guess what I, what I'll do is, you know, typically I've read each of the line items under each of those categories, and then people would say, "Hold" if they want. What I'm going to do right now is I'm just going to read these, these eight things here, and you can say, "Hold" on that, and then if there's a "Hold," we'll get more specific at that point, okay? So does, if everyone just take a minute to look at Appendix B, and don't want to rush this thing, that's where all the numbers are, just take a look at that and then we'll, we'll carry on. So then Kathy, after I read that, if nobody says, "Hold," do you want to, I guess, I'll just let you read the whole motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we're almost there, so there you are. All right, let's, under general government, the figure is $2,343,079. Under public safety, $2,396,105. Under education, $14,729,189. Under public works, $1,845,196. Human services, $339,217. Library, $344,312. Debt service, $298,351. Unclassified, $1,083,030. Total budget, $23,378,479. No "holds" on those, so let's, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the town raise and appropriate, transfer or otherwise provide to meet the salaries and wages of town officers and employees, expense and outlays of the town departments and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2025 as follows. General government, $2,343,79. Public safety, $2,396,105. Education, $14,729,189. Public works, $1,845,196. Human services, $339,217. Library, $344,312. Debt service, $298,351. Unclassified, $1,083,30. Total budget, $23,378,479. And to pay for said amounts, the town will raise and appropriate $23,378,479.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. I neglected to say that this, both the Select Board and the Finance Board recommend favorable action on that. Do we have any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. All right, Article 35 is a citizen's petition, says to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaw and zoning bylaws as follows. Substitute Select Board for Board of Selectmen in any variance as BOSS, BOSS Board of Selectmen, and B for Selectmen in context in which the term refers to the Select Board as a whole acting as a board. Substitute A, Select Board member for Selectmen, and B, Select Board members for Selectmen in context in which that term refers to one or more or all Selectmen individually, but not to the entire Select Board acting as a board, or take any action, any other action relative thereto. Note, zoning bylaw changes require a public hearing through the Planning Board. A vote on the above will only impact the general bylaw since the proper process to make a zoning change was not taken. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The note here says, "The motion will be submitted by citizen." Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
All right, let's hear it.
I'm Melissa Baker of 5 Sunset Circle in Precinct 2. Do hereby move that the town amend the Groveland general bylaws to allow for substitution of Select Board for A, Board of Selectmen, in any variance as BOSS, capital B, lowercase O, capital S, BOSS, capital B, capital O, capital S, Board of Select Man, and B for Select Men, in context in which that term refers to the Select Board as whole acting as a board.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, who made the second?
Jason.
Jason. Do you want to speak to the motion?
I brought this before the town. As we have seen in many different situations and in many of our communities, they are converting to a non-gendered term to refer to their elected officials. If you go back in history, when the, our form of town government was established, the only people who could serve in our government were landowners, who were men at the time. Times have changed, and I think as other communities are making these changes, it doesn't matter whether we are male or female sitting up on these boards, all of our input is valuable, and this is just to, you know, be consistent with other communities.
Thank you. Further discussion? We good?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second under Article 35. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I think it passed.
Yay!
All right, on a personal note, my wife will be happy because I could finally throw away all my Board of Select, William Darkford Board of Selectmen signs that are underneath the house. All right. Article 36. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $70,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Department retained earnings fund to the, to fund the replacement of the roof on the Main Street pump station, sewer pump station, or take other, any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners, favorable action recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Board. Kathy, go ahead and read that motion.
I make a motion that the town transfer the sum of $70,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Department retained earnings to fund the replacement of the roof on the Main Street Sewer Pump Station.
I'll second.
Motion and a second under Article 36. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 36, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article 37. To see if the town will transfer the sum of $200,000 from the water retained earnings to fund a pilot study pertaining to water filtration and a feasibility study to investigate buying water from Haverhill or take any other action relative thereto. The articles submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners, the Board of Select, I'm sorry, the Select Board and the Finance Board recommend both favorable action. Kathy?
Okay. I make a motion that the town transfer the sum of $200,000 from water retained earnings to fund a pilot study pertaining to water filtration and a feasibility study to investigate buying water from Haverhill.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second under Article 37. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 37, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article 38. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,287,233.36 to fund the Water Department salaries and expenses for FY 2025, said sum to be offset by fiscal year 2025 Water Department revenue or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Note, line item budget may be found in Appendix C. The Select Board and the Finance Board both recommend favorable action.
So moved.
I knew, I didn't read the motion, so go ahead.
I didn't even read, okay. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,287,233.36 to fund the Water Department salaries and expenses for FY 2025, said sum to be offset by fiscal 20, fiscal year 2025 Water Department revenues.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second under Article 38. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 38, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 39. All right, I'll, I'll let you read the motion. So it's articles submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and, again, the line item budget may be found in Appendix D. Both Boards recommend favorable action. Kathy, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $738,912.63 to fund the Sewer Department salaries and expenses for FY 2025, said sum to be offset by fiscal year 2025 Sewer Department revenue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second under Article 39. Any discussion? Take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 39, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Thank you for coming. Thanks, town guys. I don't know.